I don't know. You have a hard time making this time come straight over here. I'd like to go change.
You think we've all eaten? It's now almost six o'clock. Mark, would you lead us in a prayer before we begin the meeting?
To those who would agree with this prayer, I'd like to thank you for the privilege of being able to sit in among friends and colleagues and our constituents to take some of the business of the college. Thank you for the privilege of this responsibility. Thank you for the privilege to serve this community, and look forward to the presence in this meeting as think and talk and make decisions, and look forward to your blessing and your grace and your will to be done in all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I think it's about six o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. First agenda on the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We recognize the minutes of September 21st meeting. If any corrections or additions, if there are no corrections or additions, we'll be accepted as published. The financial statement as of September 30, 2023. Any questions or additions? Nobody wants to talk about money? Thank you. In that case, the consent agenda is accepted. We're going to recognize our guests. I think we have a record attendance tonight. We have Isma Martinez, Lori Compton, Aubrey Haynes, John Avila, Angel Miguel Lopez, Lucas Lindbrich, Librado Rodriguez, Victor Cavaero, Daniel Vargas, Cynthia Martinez, Wade Carverter, Connie Buchanan, Cody Smith, Aida Escamilla, Isadora Areola, Yvette Morales, Connie Silver, Anna Gonzalez, April Ruman, Eric Sandoval, Arpana Linian, Isabel, what?
Lignon.
Lignon?
Causina.
That works, you say?
Minus one.
Isabel.
And Thomas. Ah, Ibada, sorry.
What?
Ibada.
Ibada? Hmm. Go ahead, teach her to write. Randersell, Lisa, Barry Zimmerman, Chuck Arabedian, Mark Underwood, Shelley Waller. Have I missed anybody? Stand up and introduce yourself. Welcome. Thank you all for coming. Next, we have a audience to patrons.
Non-servant.
No audience to patrons. For reports, we have automotive technology and diesel technology report to be presented by.
I don't know what if we're, for your value is, maybe Lopez, our coordinator? Uh, myself and Daniel Vargas.
Hello, board members, President Gonzalez. First, I want to introduce our automotive team. Mr. John Aviles, Daniel Vargas. Mr. Aviles comes, he's been an instructor for twenty years. Daniel Vargas is a second-year instructor. He teaches our first year. Mr. Aviles does the second year. I do the high school dual credit. I've been, I've been teaching for eight years here, the junior college. I do the dual credit for the high school, and I'll talk a little bit about our program for dual credit. Let me get the jitters out first. Well, anyways. I teach, I teach juniors. It starts with, with sophomores. We do basic automotive at the high school. Then they come over here for the junior year and senior year. We do everything the first year. Daniel Vargas teaches. I do it on on three blocks per year, which is twelve weeks. I do brakes. I teach them how to do brakes, do electrical, do engine repair. They really love, they love the program. A lot of, a lot of students, if, if it wasn't for this, I wouldn't even be coming to school. They, they love coming to that program. They love our program. On my second year, I teach oh my goodness. I teach air conditioning. I do suspension and engine performance. We've been, we've been blessed. We got two grants. We got two big grants a couple of years ago, and we bought a lot of, a lot of equipment, a lot of ATech equipment, training aids, and a lot of diagnosis, diagnostic equipment. We have a lot of viruses to scan vehicles, to do trouble codes, to do special functions. We have, we got top-of-the-line equipment. We have a lot of equipment, a lot of good equipment. And let me see, I had some papers here. Yeah, our program, we, we try to teach, it's eight, eight, uh, air, eight, eight automotive areas, which consist of engine repair, automotive transmission, manual transmission, natural suspension, steering, brakes, electrical, heating and air conditioning, and engine performance. That's the one I was missing, engine performance. So, uh, we've, uh, we'll talk about our, our, Mr. Aviles talked about our, our certificates. We also do a third-party testing as well. And we've been, we've been, that's our ASE, third-party testing. Um, we've been having, on 2019, we had eighty percent passing. On 2020, we had, uh, on 2021, 22, we had ninety percent ASE, uh, the students passing percentage. So, we've been doing, they've been doing real good. And for student engagement, we, we do softball games involving all the bits. Um, we do dodgeball, softball tournament. We've been doing that for many years. Also cooking with the president.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yeah, help me out.
Any questions, sir?
Yes, sir. So, I know we're about to hear a presentation from the diesel program, but in the automotive technology, I guess, department, a lot of passenger vehicle pickup trucks are diesel. Do y'all give the?
We will do them. I mean, we're, we're, um, Mr. Aviles, he's an ASE master mechanic, I'm an ASE master mechanic. I've, I've, I come to, when, when I came to the college over here, I've, I've been working in dealership for over thirty years. Um, I come with a lot of experience. So, if it's diesel, if the students have diesel vehicles, whether they want to show up there, we have, we have that technology to fix it.
But, but it's not part of your criteria?
We don't have any training. At least not yet.
So, I have a question a little bit further. I want to say there's a light, light duty maintenance class is being worked on. So, those are for the smaller engines that you're seeing, like a 2.2, 2.4, and H, hybrid vehicles and whatnot. So, I know that's something that's being worked on, whoever's setting up some of the courses. I'm not too sure if it's readily available. It's something we'll be seeing in the future. Hopefully, within a year. I'll still get it in there.
The reason I ask is because if you're going to work at a dealership, big-ticket items are pickup trucks.
We do a lot of that. In dealership, you gotta fix everything from bumper to bumper. It's not like San Antonio where you're a line mechanic, where you, you're just, you're just doing air conditioning, or you're just doing brakes, or you're just doing engine performance. You, you get a ticket, you, you close a ticket.
Why, why don't y'all put that on your, your curriculum?
Curriculum? It's something that we can consider. What we can do is bring it up for advisory training needs, and bring it up that there's a lot more interest on.
It would just seem to make it more well-rounded mechanic.
More well-rounded. Well, that's why we have two different programs as far as diesel is concerned, because there's dedicated areas.
But diesel is more eighteen-wheeler. I mean, I understand what you're talking about. There are a lot of vehicles.
Pickup trucks.
Yes, a lot of vehicles. And I was talking to Mr. Fernandez as well this afternoon about it, because he was saying it would be good to have a
Light duty.
A light duty.
Light to medium-duty diesel program. Let me consider.
There are a lot of diesel out there.
Well, that's food for thought.
Do y'all have anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
To update, like if somebody, I know a couple of Lakey people have
Do we program recalibrate?
Can they, like, if they got their certifications some time back? Is there any?
Yes, there's continuing education on that.
Oh, okay.
We call it ASE, Automotive Service of Excellence. So, ASE is, is a, it's a third-party entity that certifies, and they use the latest in questions and technologies. So, every five years, our credentials expire. So, we have to recertify every five years.
So, it's in class? It's not online?
No. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a test.
Okay. Okay.
And also, we've also been, for the past, for the past three years, we've attended the conferences?
We've used, we used to go to TIBA, which is the Texas Industrial Vocation Association. It's more geared down to secondary, and there were really not much for post-secondary. So, what we did was, we looked at this ASE conference, and they really bring a lot of more information, because they're actually bringing the actual manufacturers of the vehicles, and they're bringing us up with their up-to-date. As far as electrical vehicles, hybrids, and now advanced driving assist. So, that's probably going to go ADAS. Your car's going to drive by yourself, and it's already doing it. I mean, you can see, and if you get sleepy, it'll
Shake you.
Everything is okay. Everything's functioning correctly.
You need home.
Neckles for us, too?
Anyway, these were the, these were some, some statistics as far as the graduates, how many people we have had, how many have completed their first year, and advanced auto and certified two combined. So, I'm going to be on the blue. You'll see the demographics as far as how many Hispanics. And Mr. Lopez was talking about our last year's technical dashboard. So, we're trying to manipulate our new dashboard. So, you can see that mostly around this area, we're going to have predominant Hispanic students. So, a lot of times, we do have international students also that come from Mexico. So, we try to adjust as much as we can for bilingual teaching, but all our, all our books and our ebooks are bilingual also. We can communicate very well with that. So, you can see how many dual credits compared to a non-dual credit are. The third one. And then the last one is first, uh, first time in school. That last sheet is first time in school.
Is that combined numbers from Del Rio, Wale, and Castroville?
Yeah. Yeah. So, we do have two more dual-credit programs over there. We're not very familiar with that. I'm not sure if they're getting any certifications or not. I guess we have to ask for Dean and dual-credit. But if I can get that information, I'll be more than happy to.
We've, we've, we've helped them out. When they first started, we went over there and helped them out. See what they needed, equipment-wise and stuff, and books and everything.
That's good to know. I mean, definitely, there's a need for diesel, for medium-duty diesel trucks.
I agree with it.
John, a question. I notice on here, the certificate auto, the red ones are more students there, and then certified advance auto, and then AS, AAS auto. Is there any advantage to the students in the job market to get the associate degree? Because I see it's a small percentage of people.
Yeah, it's always an advantage, but a lot of these people, they just want to get some training so they can get out to work. But if they could be able to stay here and again, associate in applied science, it's definitely an advantage, because then that would complete you as a, not only a sixty-credit certificate completion, but also an academic one as well, slash technical.
And the third-party testing as well, when they have, when they have all their, their ASCs as well, their pay grade goes up, and they get hired a lot faster.
So, there's incentive there for them to stick it up?
Curious, why haven't y'all had a, like, a light-duty, medium-duty diesel partner? It just seemed to me that if you're going to go work as a mechanic at a dealership, that if you don't, if you say, well, I can't touch a diesel engine, they're going to say, well, I need somebody that can touch a diesel engine, because
Good question. I wouldn't know how to answer it.
We can work on them. We can work on them. We can, we can show them how to work them, but, but we don't get everything together. They're, they're, they, if the student brings them, instructor or whatever, we can work on them.
How many females do you have?
Apparently, we have three.
We have three.
Three?
Do y'all have the experience to teach that, if y'all need to?
And the previous one we've had have been pretty successful in the automotive business. Not necessarily in the branch training, but we got three of them that are, one of them running the commercial accounts for O'Reilly's.
Yeah.
But without that knowledge, she wouldn't be able to, so.
We have, we have
They bring in millions of dollars.
We've missed a lot of students everywhere. I mean, in CISO and Regency, um, and Dickinson with Dean, with ATP, they're all over the place. They're always calling us that they need more mechanics, but we, I tell them, wait, wait, we just get them graduated first, because once you get them out there, they see the money, and they don't, they don't want to come back.
Right talks.
And there's actually very few mechanics. I mean, there's a lot of guys that can work on a car. To say you're a mechanic, that's, that's a hard
Diagnosing is very important.
Yeah, that's a hard deal.
That's what we're trying to work on. Trying to prove it to where they can at least excel a little bit more in diagnosing.
So, the incentive for second-year students to come back and then continue their education has been pretty high. This first, this, this year has been the first year that we had a spike in incoming second-year students continuing as well as ASC certification, and I'll be able to talk to them about continuing their education. Hopefully, they can get that in tandem at the same time. So, when they graduate, they'll be able to graduate with their second-year certificate as well as an associate's applied science in automotive technology. Or maybe if they want to branch out, continue, maybe jump into diesel, and then the other program as well, because the credits do transfer when you finish that. So, as long as we can inform them, we can help them continue that, and knowledge is power. So, aside from the reason required, diesel and auto tech, don't overlap that much, even if it's about fifty, sixty percent of saying. Basically, because the texts on both sides will say, uh,
Sorry about that.
Does say, uh, the basic answer to it is, uh, they're like, keep your chocolate out of my peanut butter. And they'll separate the whole thing. Even if it's similar, it's still different.
Come on over to the dark side.
So, but we do have that, like, like to medium duty. They're working on that. Hopefully, they'll have that course going. And it touches a lot of these smaller diesel engines, medium-sized diesel engines. Like I said, most of the stuff does overlap, and it's mostly the same if Mr. Mr. Lindbrich can
Yes, sir. A lot of the technology. Diesel technology, they're surprising automotive.
Well, the thing about the, the, so, the diesel technology, the way I look at it is, people that work in diesel work primarily at tractor dealerships, or heavy equipment dealerships, or big tractor semis. But the, but I think the future, I mean, as someone that owns heavy equipment, the real money is going to be in heavy equipment, not in eighteen-wheelers, because you can't find people that really know what they're doing with heavy equipment. I mean, that's
Well, we're opening up a program.
That's good.
That's, yeah, that's core of all.
That's good. Jump in the game. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next slide, Mr.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Good evening. My name's Lucas Lindbrich. I teach the diesel program and program coordinator. I'd like to introduce our instructors and lab assistant. Victor Cavaero, he teaches the second year of the program. He's been with us for ten years now.
Ten years?
Librado Rodriguez, we just hired him this year to teach the second cohort of the first year. We had enough students that it bled over, so we opened up an afternoon course, and he's, he's been with. He's actually a former graduate from what year?
Oh, six.
Oh, six. He's also the supervisor at the Eagle Pass School District Bus
Bus Barn.
Bus Barn. And then I have Esmeralda Areola. She's a former student of mine as well. She's our lab assistant. She helps out in the, in the lab, in the shop. And when did you graduate? Sixty. So, that's, that's our team. Myself, I've been with the college twenty-two years now, and started the program. Talk a little bit about our, the size of our program. Like I said, I mentioned earlier, we are expanding. We've got forty-seven students enrolled this semester. That's two first-year programs and a second-year program. And just to break down, we've got eighteen in the morning class, nineteen in the afternoon class, and Mr. Cavaero's carrying ten second-year students. And then, like I mentioned, the, the program is, we have a waiting list every year, so that's what warranted opening up an afternoon class for the first-year program. I don't have handouts for you, but I've kind of got some slides. Any questions so far? Uh, this is our dashboard. This is showing enrollment over the years. You can see in 2020, it dropped. Of course, we had to limit our exposure and stuff. We've doubled from last year's enrollment to this year's enrollment, up to forty-eight, forty-seven. We do have three female students enrolling in the program currently. And of course, as you can see, Esmeralda's proof that they do very well. Let's see here. There's some of the, some pictures of the students. These are some of the engines we currently just purchased two weeks ago. We're getting them ready to incorporate them into the program. Some students working on one of the trucks. Some more, and I'll get into this in a minute. You'll see some new training aids and stuff, and I'll talk about the grants that we got. We did recently, in the last three years, we, we received two, two pretty significant grants. One of them was Union Pacific Railroad. They granted us, I believe it was, I may be wrong on that. I thought it was three hundred and eighty. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but it, it is providing funds to expand our building, almost double the size of what we currently have in the farthest shop space. So, that's been, you know, definitely a needed situation there. So, we are, I don't know percentage, complete percentage, but I think the deadline is somewhere in November, late November is when they're projecting it for. Uh, so, hopefully, we'll be able to take that over and move into that. It's going to be definitely needed. Uh, we also received a jet grant somewhere in the neighborhood. I believe it was two hundred and eighty, which provided the purchase of some training aids and stuff like that, that we've putting, putting into use this semester. Actually, we just received all of them, so.
Let me call you back.
And of course, the construction of the new shop is currently in progress. Any questions on that? We are currently in the process of getting, I guess, I don't know what, all the necessary stuff together to open the program here in Uvalde. And that's going to focus on off-highway construction, agricultural equipment. So, thinking the plans are starting in fall of '24. So, hopefully, that's moving along pretty quickly. And that's going to address that area of construction, uh, equipment, off-road equipment, so.
What do y'all plan to do? Is that going to be like an extra class, or is it going to be?
It's going to be a standalone program.
Oh, standalone program?
Yeah, it's going to be its own program here in Uvalde. It'll be under the diesel umbrella, but it's going to be its own, own program. It should be a two-year offering associates, so that's what we're getting together. It should be a two-year offering associates, so that's what we're getting together on.
There's a whole different set of courses we have to have for that, that kind of equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would seem to me a high demand.
Diesel in general, anywhere is, is high demand. Like you said, like anywhere from light-duty pickups all the way up to equipment, so.
So adding this off-highway program, uh, we can potentially, you know, offer, uh, we have the ability to offer an enhanced skill. And we make, part of the, the expansion is gonna involve adding automotive to Eagle Pass. So automotive will have, uh, Eagle Pass will have automotive and diesel. Uvalde will have automotive and diesel. There may be an opportunity to offer what's called an enhanced skills certificate, which is above and beyond typically nine to twelve hours. And, and that could be where the light duty fits in and you might be able to capture from both automotive and diesel students to take that enhanced skills. You know, after they finish their initial training, they could stick around another semester perhaps, get that additional training for working on those light duties. It's something that we'll definitely look at.
That's a good idea.
And to add to that, our program mainly focuses on class, well, class three through class eight, the heavy duty, medium, medium to heavy duty. We do try to incorporate some of the light-duty stuff in with, with our teachings, but it's, we don't have a, a class that's focused directing on that, but we do try to focus some on them. I've got probably three or four students right now that are working at Ansera Ford and Eagle Pass, which they work on Dodge and Ford, you know, the light-duty diesel stuff. They've been able to transition in pretty well on that.
So is that how it works? Like at most dealerships, they have mechanics that only work on diesel and then only work on gas?
Well, a lot of times, when they get into the dealership, they will focus, like for Ford, for example, they have what they call their, their senior tech, and they have areas that they can focus on. And diesel is one of them that's separate, you know? So that technician will be the one that works mostly on all the diesel trucks that come in. So, you know, they, they'll have that one or two technicians that focus on all those medium or light-duty diesel engines coming in, in the shop. And then they'll have a guy that does transmission and then another guy that does air conditioning.
So it specializes?
Yeah, it specializes where, you know, and that kinda is, it depends on the dealership and the structure, so. Also, with the new addition of the program, we're gonna be incorporating a partnership with Kubota. They have some curriculum and instruction that we're gonna incorporate into our classes. And the students should be able to leave with a Kubota certificate along with their, their, their regular college certificate. That's one of the partnerships that is being incorporated, is the program that's gonna be... Let's see.
Are, are, is our staff gonna have to get special training to do these other courses or get to hiring more people?
Just so happens that Mr. Cavaedo is, his background is a lot in the off-roading and agriculture equipment, so I can't say for sure, but the plans are that he's gonna come in and do the program here on the off-road. So that's gonna...
Where do y'all get the curriculum for that? Is there like a template where you...
Well, there's...
How's that work?
It's called WECOM. It's a workforce education manuals.
First mission.
The state of Texas says, "Hey, these are the courses that you can work from," so we can pick certain courses. And a lot of them, like, for example, diesel engine, it's kind of a broad spectrum, so that's gonna fit into his program. He just, you know, focuses on equipment engines. And then we're gonna have hydraulics and some power shift and, you know, transmissions that they only use in equipment stuff, so. But some of it, like basic electrical that I teach in the program, is gonna be the same class that he teaches here. It's, you know, battery starters, alternators.
But there are different companies like Cengage or, you know, Bra Hill that already has, have books designed for a class like that.
For a class like that.
So what you do is we purchase these books, we'll go over the chapters, go over the curriculum, look at the objectives that we wanna achieve to these objectives. And then that's where we present. So basically, it's all gonna be...
As far as the actual classes that we'll be teaching, WECOM determines what classes we use.
We can offer.
We're just gonna pick and choose what...
And there's, uh, there's advisory committees over each technical program based on industry experts, you know, that know that field, and, and they help guide the curriculum and they help keep that curriculum current. So every year, they meet with that advisory committee. They present to them, very similar to this, and, and the curriculum as well, the, the courses. Oftentimes, the advisory committee will say, "You know what? This particular topic is, is really not relevant anymore. We need to focus more on this." And so that's the, the primary mechanism that they use in the, in the tech programs to make sure that the instruction that the students are receiving is the most current and, and is what the employers want. Because that curriculum committee, I mean, the advisory committee's made up of employers. So what they're looking for in their future employees, they'll, they'll guide our faculty as to make sure that we're producing a product that is useful to them.
And to add to that, we currently have the recruiter for RDO equipment, which is the John Deere Heavy Equipment. He's on our advisory board. He's been on our advisory board for about two years now. And we're bringing him in, bringing him in on this new program to help us, you know, let us know what needs to be taught on that too, so he's gonna be part of that new program as well. United Rentals is another large company that wants to do some partnership. They have some curriculum that they want us to incorporate as well.
But it's gonna be a big program.
We're hoping. I mean, it's definitely gonna be well-needed. These are some of the pictures of some of the new training aids that were, we were able to purchase through the grant. That center one is an air conditioning simulator. You got on the right, some brake simulator. On the left there is a new engine simulator. That's a Detroit diesel fifteen-liter engine with a complete new exhaust system that, you know, that incorporates all the emissions, up-to-date stuff, so it was definitely a great thing that we were able to get that. That pretty much sums up what I have to present. If you have any questions or anything, any more questions, then I'm more than willing to help answer them.
How many students have we budgeted for here in Uvalde when we open up the program?
I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, but I'm gonna assume that we're looking at hopefully getting twenty first-year to begin, you know, so. I think class size is gonna be around twenty is what we're looking at, as far as first year. And then, of course, in two years, we'll look at what, what comes into the second-year program, so.
So, so right now, the program is just in Uvalde or we have the same classes in Eagle Pass?
Uh, right now, the only diesel we have is in Eagle Pass.
So y'all are based at Eagle Pass?
Yes, we are, we are in Eagle Pass.
Oh, okay.
At the Chittam Technical Center.
Yeah, so we have automotive in Uvalde. We have diesel in Eagle Pass. With the tech expansion that we're doing this year, we're gonna add diesel to Uvalde, so we'll have both auto and diesel, and we're adding automotive to Eagle Pass, so we'll have auto and diesel over there.
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of the effort you guys are doing, those are just important work.
Thank you very much. We're glad to be able to do it.
We thank you.
Yes. Ms. Ivette, you guys will present our financial aid.
Yes. Hi, everybody. How are y'all this evening? I'm just gonna let y'all know just a little bit of what we do, what we've been doing, what we're gonna do in the next year or so. First of all, yesterday was financial aid day. So I applaud all my staff. Back here, I have Barry Zimmerman. We have twelve years of experience in financial aid. Cynthia Martinez, the assistant director, she has fifteen years. Connie Silva has eighteen years with the college. Anna Gonzalez is our admin. She's been with us two years. Isabel is another financial aid advisor. She has eleven years with us. I've been in the school district. I was at Soul Ross and then I came over here. I have twenty-one years total in financial aid. I have two employees in Eagle Pass and two in Del Rio. So we have a good team. Our team works very well together. For the 22-23 school year, we received eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one FAFSA's. And we work every single one that comes in. Our advisors have a caseload of over a thousand each one. So, uh, we awarded Pell of over eleven million dollars. Direct loans of one million two hundred and five thousand dollars. So besides receiving the, the FAFSA's that are coming in, we're still awarding, we're still doing more, more work as they come in. Also, we award other grants besides our Pell grants and our direct loans. We, this year, were very fortunate to have received a great amount of our T E O G money. Last year, we received like fifty-five thousand. This year, we received over a million dollars. So we are working, well, Cynthia and the staff are working furiously, trying to get them to sign the drug form because each student has to sign a drug form. And we'll award each student seven hundred and fifty dollars for the fall and seven hundred and fifty for the spring if they attend, no matter how many hours they attend.
What is a drug form? So they have to sign a drug?
A drug statement form that they haven't been convicted of a drug, a drug conviction. We have already this year awarded, um, there's three different classifications for the T E O G. The first one is the initial year. That's the first year a student will receive it. And we have awarded so far six, four hundred and sixty-four students at six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. The second one is the second year. If you've received it the first year, you get it a second year. And we've received, we've issued a hundred and twenty-eight students, a hun, for a total of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And then if you received it the first year and the second year, your third year is a continuance. We have twenty-one students for twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, but we still have sixty-six thousand dollars to award. So we're still aggressively looking for those students and getting them to sign the form so that we can award them this money. The financial aid staff attends FAFSA nights at the high schools. Right now, we're working on FSA user IDs. And that's for the student and for the parents. Our staff is also very visible on campus. We're very approachable to students and to staff. We have an open-door policy in our department and we do not take appointments. If you're here and your advisor is busy in our office, somebody else is going to see you. Our, our staff is very knowledgeable, starting with our admin up front. She's very knowledgeable of what needs to be done, what needs to be turned in, how to read our screens, how to read our awards. So we get it all done. We also attend weekly trainings, virtually and trainings in person to continue with our professional development. We also attend trainings to receive national credential, credential, sorry, through NASFA. We have, I have some numbers for this fall. So far, we've awarded ten million, over ten million dollars in grants and scholarships and other gift aid. That's for duplicated numbers of four thousand seventy-seven. Unduplicated would be twenty-nine forty-seven. For an average award of thirty-five oh seven per student. Work-study, we have forty-nine students right now under our work-study program, and an average for the semester is twenty-one thirteen. We've done two hundred and nineteen duplicated loans, a hundred and thirty-one unduplicated for forty, no, four thirteen, seven thirty-two. Four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two for an average of thirty-one fifty-eight. So again, like I said, we stay very busy, very, very busy. One of the main things that we're working on this year is the twenty-four, twenty-five FAFSA. There's a new law that came in, the Simplification Act, and so we are working on that. It's supposed to be simplified for the students. It's not very simplified for us, but it is for the students. The number of questions have been reduced on the FAFSA. I'm gonna tell you eleven of the major things that are going on. The FSA ID will be created prior now to completing a FAFSA, before they could start their FAFSA out and then in between, "Oh, your mom needs an ID." You could do that. No, now you have to do it before. Again, it's shorter and more user-friendly for the students to complete and their parents. Before, you could only add ten colleges. Now they're letting you add twenty colleges. So you have more of a variety if you wanna apply at different colleges. The FAFSA is available in more languages this year, this coming year. Applicants will be required to use the IRS data retrieval. It's not the data retrieval anymore, it's the data extract. What that does is when they do their FAFSA, you don't need your actual tax return anymore. We'll, it'll automatically be pulled from the IRS. So that's a good thing. But the only, um, there's some nicks here and there, but we have to work with those. All, all the students' parents and grandparents and whoever are putting on their FAFSA's are now contributors. We're not calling them your grandma or we're not calling them your stepdad or... They're all contributors now. We have worked, I have worked twenty-one years for the schools, and we have all worked on an EFC, which is an estimated family contribution. We no longer will have an EFC. We will now have an SAI. We're so sad. I was so hurt. It's going away. Let's see, the number in college will not be used to calculate the SAI anymore. Before you could, if you had a brother or if you had a sibling or three siblings going to college, your EFC would go down. SAI is not gonna allow that anymore. Some students will automatically be awarded a Pell grant depending on how the questions are answered. The parent responsible for submitting the FAFSA in cases of divorce or separation has changed. It is now the student with, um, how would I say this? The student with, that the parent provides more for them. There was a big issue at one of our conferences that we couldn't get answers to was, there was a gentleman, gentleman saying, "What if I pay fifty thousand dollars a year to my wife for child support and she doesn't work? So am I the contributor or even though the child is living with the mother?" So that's something that we're, we still don't have a, a precise answer because they keep saying, "We'll get back with you and we'll get back with you." So we're still waiting for them to get back with us. Family farms and small businesses must be reported as assets now. Before, they weren't. Now they do. The only thing, if your home is on your farm, you can take the amount of your home out, but you have to claim the, the monetary amount on your farm. Those are eleven of the most, or the biggest changes that are going... Those are 11 of the most, are the biggest changes that are going on in the FAFSA. So, we're working with, with our I T because our, our system is gonna change. Everything's gonna change. It's not a simple process, but we're working on, we've been working on this. So, we'll get through it. Any questions? None?
Is there a percentage of students that don't qualify?
Oh, I have, I have the percentage. Let me see, what did I, I wrote it down. I think it's about 10%. It was like 91% that do qualify. Well, a lot of the times, we, we send them a letter and say, you didn't qualify for the Pell grant, but you can apply for student loans. Or we have T PEG money, which is the school's money. We can award them T PEG money if they have a need. So, we try and help those.
What's the status of the student loans with all this stuff in the, in the press?
Paying, they're not paying? Well, a lot of the student loans were forgiven if you had the right amount of time, let, years on the P S L F. And then, so now they're, he's trying, Biden's trying to get another, some of our other students that have a balance, he's trying to give them $10,000 to pay off some of those student loans, but it hasn't gone through.
They do a good job managing the, the amount of student loans that a student takes. They do a lot of financial counseling with the students to make sure that they don't get in a position where they come out with a certificate one or associate degree with $20,000 in debt. So, they do an excellent job, financial planning with the student and counseling them to not, you know, max out their student loans, you know, if they don't need it.
If a student wants to apply for a student loan, they have to first come in and visit with their financial aid advisor. And the advisor lets them know, you know, all the do's and don'ts and what's gonna happen when you graduate. Then they have to go do, we have Insepta and they have to do a counseling through them. And they learn more ins and outs of if they were to receive a student loan, how they're gonna pay it back, when they're gonna pay it back, how much they have to pay back, et cetera. And that's part management also on, on that part, on the Insepta part. So, yeah, they, they don't just get the loan very easily.
And I want to say, as a result of that, our default rate for student loans is very low.
Right now, it's very low because we haven't had any, any payment. Nobody's paid.
But even before that, it was very?
Even before that, yes. We watched it very carefully.
I don't understand. Why would, why haven't they paid loans? Is it because they haven't graduated?
Yeah, some students, after they graduate, they're like, no, I don't have to pay it. But, you know, if they file an income tax return and they owe a student loan, their tax return is taken. They don't get, you know, it's just, there's just certain punishments, I guess, that you get for not paying back a student loan.
And we're penalized if, if too many students default.
After they leave?
After they leave, you know, somebody and they graduated in 2008. If, if we have a lot of defaults, that means they're not paying, it, it could impact our current financial aid.
But hopefully, you have a very small percentage of kids that are taking student loans.
We do, we do. But like I said, we have to counsel them and talk to them and let them know what they're doing because a lot of them are like, say they're in the mechanics and my friend went and got a loan. Now, all of them want to come and get a loan. But we have to talk to every single one of them that comes in. And we have to let them know.
We don't readily just give out student loans. They have to go through the process. We educate them of, you know, do you really need it?
Because if you have, if you have, if our cohort rate is over 30, I believe, for so many years, we won't be able to give out student loans. So, we have to monitor that very closely.
And really, the, the only control that we have is that counseling on the front end. Because I mean, once they're not your students, they're, you have no hammer. But yet, their actions or lack of actions can impact future students by preventing them from getting student loans.
Do they have like a three-month or six-month grace period after they graduate?
They have six months.
Six months?
What's the percentage rate on the loan payback?
The percentage rate, it just depends because there's different programs that they can apply for. They can, on how they're going to pay it back. So, it just depends. If they have a low, if they have a low amount that they owe, it usually starts like at $50.
And student loans are, I don't think they're dischargeable in bankruptcy. So, you're gonna pay them one way or another? I don't think you can stop it.
Thank you. It's set by the government.
The death of taxes is student loans.
It fluctuates.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report. Next, we have a report from Title IX.
Yes, Randi will present that, Title IX. Every year, we have to present to the board, we have to file it with the state on the number of Title IX cases that were open. Randi will go over it.
Okay, so, this report is for the time period from, what am I looking at? This is from September of 2022 to August 31st of 2023. We had three reports of Title IX incidents. Of those two have concluded and there was no finding of a policy violation. One of them is still under investigation and will continue.
Just a quick question. Could you kind of tell us about what the Title IX is?
Sure, yeah. So, Title IX is a discrimination, it's a federal discrimination law, discrimination based on gender, sex. And so, this includes things like sexual harassment, sexual assault, all of those kinds of things. Does that answer?
Yeah, yeah. And so, I guess y'all are required to monitor if there are complaints related to?
We are.
Are those complaints, are they made by, who are they made to and are they made by like a lawyer or how are they made?
No, so, student, well, they could be. Students can, can make those reports if they're a victim.
Who do they report the Title IX violation to?
There's a Title IX coordinator.
Okay, we talked about that.
Yes. There's a Title IX coordinator. We're required to have one. And right now, it's me.
Dr. Sheller is our interim Title IX coordinator.
How do we, how do we publicize that to the student body?
We have a webpage. I can show you. Campus Safety.
I mean, is that part of student orientation?
Yes. We are also required to make it part of orientation and then also to make it part of, to give students a, I think the word they use is orientation. We include it in our orientation as they're coming in. And then we also have a, similar to the courseware that you guys did for the data security. It's out of that same company. They do an additional Title IX training for students. And then faculty and staff do it as well. So, this is the webpage. And this gives all of the policy information about sexual misconduct and sexual harassment, what constitutes an offense. All the definitions, we have, we're required to have all of this information public facing. The sanctions that can be involved if you're found to be in violation, including also the reporting allegation, the way to report allegations of sexual misconduct. And then we also, this report that we're doing tonight to you guys has to be linked on our website as well. So, we've got to get it up as soon as you guys.
Maybe you need to update your website there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so, it'll be the next, it'll be, the one that we're doing tonight will be the, the new one, yeah. But we can't post it until you guys have, have heard it and certify it, yeah.
Do the dual credit students also get the same orientation as the ones that are coming in?
Yes. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next on the list, we have the President's Report.
Yes, sir. So, tech expansion, we touched on it a little bit with the diesel and automotive presentation. We've met with architects. They're going over what we shared with them, what our vision is. And they are working on, you know, determining sizes of buildings. We told them, you know, in a broad sense, the kind of space, the amount of space that we think is needed. And then obviously, they still have to put in mechanical rooms, janitorial rooms, restrooms, I T closets, hallways, et cetera. So, they're, they're incorporating all that additional space. And they're also looking at the different layouts, different sites that we would like to have them. So, they're looking at orientation within those sites. And we hope to have back, for the November board meeting, a, a proposed budget that would give us estimates for each of the components of the, of the tech expansions. We'll bring that to the board. And if it's to your approval, then at that point, then we can, you know, order modulators, start doing some site work and so forth, getting some, some bids, formally design the buildings and go down that road. Right now, it's all preliminary to develop the budgets. Once we have budgets approved, then we can move forward from that point. So, we hope to be a little bit further down the road in November. appraisal districts, we have vacancies to allocate votes to different candidates. We did put on Rial and Zavala on the October board meeting. Their nomination slate is not finished yet, so we'll table those for November. But we do have both of Uvalde's ready to go. Begun my series of meeting with students. So, as you know, every semester, I meet with students on Uvalde, Del Rio, Eagle Pass campus. Met with Del Rio. There's a list of their questions there in your board packet. We met with Uvalde, or I met with Uvalde last week. We'll include those questions in your November board meeting. And then November 6th, I'm scheduled to be in Eagle Pass to visit with those students. The two, the Del Rio and Uvalde had great attendance, probably over 40, 50 students in, in attendance for each of those presentations. Also, on Friday, October 6th, did a presentation for our faculty on House Bill 8, which is our new state appropriations. Shared with them how, how the different completion points impact our, our funding. So, I think that was received well. The, the feedback I received from faculty was they, they really appreciated having that information. Our college rodeo was, was a great success. We had a great turnout, both nights. Our, our rodeo contestants, our, our team did very well. We had Slade Wood that ended up winning the tie-down and the team roping. And then a couple of our barrel racers, Alyssa Flores and Natalia Ramirez placed third and fourth. Then we had two others in the tie-down from, from the college with Gutierrez and Blaze Byler that placed. So, the way this works is before Riley Joe Cheatham was fifth in goat tying and Carly Garcia in team roping. So, the way it works is the, the top 10 places at each of the rodeo events, I believe there's six in the fall, six in the spring. They get points for the top 10 places. And then accumulative of all those points, at the end of the, the year, the top three get to go to Wyoming for the national champions. So, they're, they're building up points as we go. They left today. They're, they're competing at Mount Pleasant, Northeast Texas Community College. And after the first two rodeos, you can see down there where they're placing for the southern region, which is the, the region that we're in. Solar Eclipse, we hosted some scientists on campus. Community members came out. It was a bit overcast, but I think we had good attendance and good engagement with the, with the students. It was primarily put on by the folks from Sol Ross. They're, they have a STEM grant that they're working with. But we had a good attendance. It was at our intermural field. We expect a bigger turnout for the April eclipse. That is a total eclipse. And apparently, a total eclipse is our, very unique. I looked on a website that predicts for the next 50 years, and there's not another one in Uvalde for the next 50 years. I think they said the last one here was maybe 1,800 or something like that. So, it's, it's a big deal. And we're prepared. We're hosting several university scientists, Colorado, California, I think UT is in a group as well. Uvalde is, they chose Uvalde because it's, it's one of the areas where it's gonna be able to, it's gonna have total eclipse for the longest period of time. The absolute longest occurs in Torrio, Mexico. But they don't want to go to Torrio. And I told them, we have a campus in Eagle Pass. And they're like, we don't want to go to Eagle Pass. So, they're here. And, and there's like two or three seconds difference between Eagle Pass and here. So, they said it's nominal. The other thing, on Monday, we're hosting a community forum, kind of leadership, Uvalde to, along with the Giffords Law Center and some, Dr. Monica Martinez from UT and a couple of her colleagues will be here and really to discuss results of their finding and how they impact Uvalde and what steps we can take to move forward. So, the, the college, we represent the college and the Giffords are hosting this event. And I'll have more information at the next meeting on how it turned out. And then you can see there the, the upcoming events. Turkey Trot is on November the 18th. That'd be the Saturday after our board meeting in November. Then we have Christmas at the college on the 28th. We have our basketball tournament, November 30th through December 2nd. Christmas open house luncheon on December 7th. So, you can start filling out your calendars. That's really all I have, sir.
Thank you so much for that report. Next item on the agenda is to consider an act on resolution allocating votes for individuals to serve as directors of the Uvalde County appraisal district.
Shall I open to the minutes financial statement?
He accepted them as presented.
We didn't vote?
You're gonna go back and take a vote for the consent agenda?
We didn't vote on the consent agenda items?
Not the, not the minutes.
Should we call for a motion to accept the minutes of the September 1st?
I'll go ahead and make them. I'll move.
You move. You decide? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Need a motion to accept the financial statement as of February 10th, 23?
Was that for both of them? The motion you made? So, he made a motion to do both of them.
The vote, so both were accepted. Okay. Then, then we go to the resolution of allocating the votes.
Yeah, and this, the item number seven is for the recall vacancy. And we have, so that's item number seven. There's four candidates on the slate, excuse me, three candidates on the slate. Luis Fernandez, Rosenberg Viza, Raymond Velos. And we have 48 votes to allocate for the college.
I'd like to make a recommendation and on the recall election that we split our votes evenly amongst the three candidates. That'll be 16 votes each, I believe.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion is made and seconded, split the votes evenly, 16 votes per candidate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Next item we don't need, yes, is consider an act on resolution allocating votes for individuals to serve as directors of the Uvalde County appraisal district regular term.
Yes, sir. This is item number eight. There are five candidates. Yes, sir. This is item number eight. There are five candidates on the nomination slate, Jalen Carnes, Johnny Guzman, Mike Hawkes, Howard Kingsbury, Tony Moreno, and we have two hundred and seven votes to allocate.
Do I hear a motion to accept a candidate, or anybody in favor of accepting one candidate over the other?
Who are they? I think the last one is Tony, right?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move that we allocate the vote to Tony Moreno.
I second.
So, we have a motion in second to allocate the whole two hundred and seven votes to Tony Moreno. Anybody against? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you, guys. I don't need them.
You got it up? Open it?
We'll table number nine and number 10.
Okay. So, then we need to consider an act on the depository contract.
Good motion.
We need a motion to table?
Oh, I move that one to table. Item 9.
Both of them?
Both of them.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to table items nine and 10 on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 11 is to act, consider an act on depository contract.
Yes, sir. Alyssa, you want to take this?
Yes. The administration recommends that we renew our depository contract with First State Bank through August the 31st of 2019, of 2029. And the scope of work that was submitted is attached with your packet.
We do have representatives from First State Bank. If the board has any questions, I believe this was the only bid that was returned.
Yes.
So, is that your recommendation?
So, then we need an act.
To renew.
Don't have much of a choice.
The contract.
We need a motion to accept that depository contract?
I'll move.
In second.
Motion made in second to accept the depository contract with First State Bank. Anybody opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number 12 on the agenda is to consider an act on city of Honda lease for South Texas Regional Training Center.
Yes, sir. Item number 12, this is, we have an annual lease with the city of Honda. They have offered to renew the lease for us at the same rate, same terms, just for an extra year. My recommendation is that we accept it.
So, it didn't take into account any inflation?
Same terms.
Same terms.
I saw move. We accept the recommendation.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
I have a second.
You second.
I'll second.
Motion made in second to accept the Honda city lease for additional year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consider an act on rescheduling the December board meeting.
Yes, sir. We ask if the board would consider moving the December board meeting from December 21st to December 14th. That would be a week earlier.
We need a motion to change, to reschedule that meeting?
I move that we change the meeting.
Motion made in second to reschedule December board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. We're going to now consider personnel matter, the board will convene close session in the front for the meeting act. Listen to the code, 551-4072 and 551-4074.
Seven oh eight.
What is it, seven oh eight?
What is it, 7:08?
Mm-hmm.